So I think we can get started with the training, if that's okay. It's at seven. So what we're gonna do is, there's a lot of resources on the Duchess County Planning Federation, and there's a few good ones that we thought we might be able to utilize. They're longer. They're like an hour, an hour and a half, so we'll just do segments of it. Like do first segment now, and then the first, the rest of it at the next meeting. But this one is on Housing Development Finance 101. It was done by Doug Allcott, who works for CPC. So he's financing a lot of the projects kind of in the Hudson Valley. Why we thought this was important for the board is, I think, when we're talking about design choices and we're talking about aspects that could be added to planning board projects, I think something we often heard is, "That's not financially feasible." Or, you know, I think we hear that a lot, especially now in the current construction, in the financing climate, about how expensive these projects are and why certain things can be added or cannot. So I think in order to have more fruitful conversations with applicants when we're talking about that, that we thought this finance course might be helpful. I haven't seen this one yet, but I heard good things about this. And Doug Allcott actually did a, he came and did a training for the, for the city council last year, kind of on the same topic. So that's, we'll just do, we'll run this until 7:30 is when the trainings go, right? And then, and then we'll get into the meeting.
And I would please to welcome our speaker, Doug Allcott of CPC and Community Preservation Corporation. Doug has worked in a variety of roles with CPC for over 25 years, and he's currently the Senior Vice President and Director of Lending in Hudson Valley office. He oversees the lending process from origination through providing construction supervision and conversion to permanent financing. And I would just like to add that one of the reasons we wanted to host this class is that kind of planning, we understand that when we're not a real planner or reviewing those type of projects, where they're not on board, which you're passing anything in your community, it can be difficult to understand how financing comes into play and the market and the product being unfeasible in there. So what other project is different, whether to balance him and what cancel that with a bank and what doesn't. And so I expect that your presentation will provide us all with an understanding of the capacities of housing development and finance. So with that, I will turn things over to Doug.
Thank you, Ed. Good evening, everybody. A pleasure to be here. One thing that I didn't mention is, aside from my role here at CPC, I've also been a member of the Quirtin, Southern Board of Appeals where I live, the building of Quirtin Westchester County for 16 years. And so I'm familiar with these continuing education courses and have participated in that level. So I guess, I'm, it's hard to say. And one of them, I wanted to give you first a little background about CPC. We were established in 1974. We are a not-for-profit lending institution, which is kind of a weird model, but we, we, we're a consortium of about 15 banks that offer us lines of credit to do construction loans, both online and credit. We loaned out on middle line. And then we also have a number of permanent loan products for when the project gets completed. And East End is, you know, mostly what we do is rental housing. We can do some home renovation, but we also do the 30-year permanent mortgage on, on the project after it's completed. And, you know, we believe that housing is really central to transforming neighborhoods and to thriving communities. We try to collaborate with municipalities, with not-for-profits, with private developers, church organizations, all with the goal of, you know, trying to make our community better, provide both, both market rate and affordable housing. Because we realize that there's just seconds within a minute in terms of affordability. And our goal, these are the broader community definization goals for the communities of our work. That's a little background of us. And, you know, since 1974, we've invested over $14 billion. Almost all of that has been in the state. We have regional offices throughout the state. As I mentioned, I'm the director of Hudson Valley office. I've been there for 28 years. And then there's this sort of, you know, the benefits that go with the investments. We've done, we've financed over 225,000 residential units, which provide housing for more than a million people and, you know, also creates jobs. We estimate 120,000 jobs created through our programs. So that's still like the social benefit. And then our, you know, we're mission driven, so we don't, we're not with a bank. We want, we don't do, you know, we don't do luxury housing, you know, we don't do hotels. We focus on housing. We're still doing mixed-use properties, which involve typically around four retail commercial businesses, but mostly our focus is on housing. And we're trying to figure out ways to produce, develop the cost to produce affordable housing and help close the racial wealth gap. And also committed to investing in green economy. A lot of what we do is, we have a whole sustainability department. We try to promote green building, energy-efficient buildings. And so it's also over our mission goals. So that's, that's about us. And then before I get into the program, I kind of wanted to just give you like what I want the takeaways to be there. And some of the things I'm, some of the slides I showed involve math. You know, I mean, don't get too tied up in math. I'm really just, this is to show how a lender looks at a project and a developer and the due diligence that we, that we do before we need to finance a project, how we monitor throughout construction, how we also monitor once it goes into a 30-year permanent mortgage. We also service all the permanent loans that we do. We typically do 30-year mortgages on multifamily rental properties that we finance. So we also monitor post, post-construction and stuff as well. And I think that, you know, sometimes people think developers are just running open streets and doing whatever they want, but there's a lot of oversight that goes into a lending on affordable or any kind of multifamily property. It's very risky. There's a lot of risks involved with it, and we take it very seriously. So, you know, we're typically investing usually somewhere around 75% or 8% of the total project cost. So we're the biggest investors in these projects. And we take it very seriously, and we want to make sure that it's successful for the developer, for the community, for tenants, for the developer. So those are, those are the takeaways that I want to try to put in the line for people in consideration. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is what we call the five Cs of credit. And these are the things that we look at when we're looking at a developer or a particular project. And the most important C is character. And so we're reviewing credit history and experience of the borrower. We check their business preferences. We check their credit references. We Google them. We want to make sure that they're reputable people and that they're going to provide, that they're going to perform on project when we finance. We look at their capacity. That's their ability to pay the loan. Previous projects completed, we want them to have done projects of similar size or scope. We look at their personal and business financial statements, both through developer and the general contractor for construction projects. We review the sources of capital. That's the third C. And that, there's basically three types of capital sources. One is equity, or the cash contribution of the developer. And when I say CPC, I almost mean any, any kind of conventional bank. We're a little bit different than a bank, as I explained earlier. You know, this is, most of the time, usually we look at things the same way as us. And then if there's a gap, which there often is in affordable housing projects, because the rents are typically lower than an ordinary rate project, then we look to use public subsidy sources to fill that gap. So there's three capital sources: cash, conventional loan, and public subsidy. And the fourth C is the collateral, which is the property itself. Or, you know, if it's new construction, we're looking at the projected completed product or what's planned to be constructed. If it's a renovation project, same thing. What was the project going to look like after it's renovated? We do a lot of adaptive reuse projects, where we're converting old building buildings into housing or, you know, things like that. We call that, you know, we call that adaptive reuse. And then the collateral that we take on projects, not just the property itself, but we also, we want to ensure conclusion of projects. So often we'll take either a bond or a letter of credit as additional collateral, which is 10% of the construction cost. So if there's a cost overrun, then we can pull on whatever credit or bond to make sure the project gets successfully completed. And then the last C is just what we call conditions. And that's like the condition of the neighborhood, what's going on in the market with construction costs, what's going on with the local economy, what's going on with the national economy, what's going on with interest rates, what's going on in the market. And so it's sort of like the conditions of the economy. And so those are the five Cs of credit. And then that, you know, that's, that's what is the basis of our evaluation. And the next thing I wanted to talk about was the project feasibility. And there's three things that we look at in the pre-development stage before a project gets financed. And that is the site itself, or project itself, the development team, and the financials. And that's, and I'm going to talk mostly about the financials of rental properties. That's primarily what we finance. So, you know, the site itself, we go out and inspect the property. We, we look at the site. We review it for dis- necessarily compliance, does it have access to transportation? Are there comparable projects in the area? What are other musical considerations? Fermi's balloon toes are going to be met. And are there community plans out there, preferences? What is the community itself all? And we try to work with municipalities that want to promote different types of projects. So we look at that whole package when we're looking at a site project. And then in terms of the development teams, it's who's going to, who's going to be responsible for making sure this is a successful development? We look at the owner, the helper, and the partners, often the times there's not-for-profit sponsors. We go to joint ventures with, with different types of developers. We look at the experience of the architect and engineer that's working on the project. We want to know about the general contractor who's building it. What is, what's his capability? And then on the back end, we want to, we review the management company, make sure they're reputable, and the management company is subject to our approval prior to closing on, you know, a 30-year mortgage. And then there's other consultants involved. There's a lot of programs out there, both through the utility companies and through different state programs, you know, energy efficiency. So there's also, there's also consultants involved, maybe about that aspect. And then the last thing, and this is something I'm going to kind of focus on in the next few slides, is the financials of rental properties and how do we determine how much you're going to be owing on a property? And unlike, we most of you probably have their own online mortgages, you know, and they qualify for online mortgage, they're really looking at your personal income, which is different than multifamily lending. Multifamily lending, we're lending on the cash flow, the building, or projected cash flow of the building. So when we size the loan, we look at the income from the apartments, retail if there is interest use, and other, other types of income that a property can produce, such as if there's a laundry room, if there's apartment fees, or maybe sales out or rentals on the roof. So we look at all the income that the property produces first, and then we look at the property operating and maintenance expenses. And those are what we call O and M. And that's basically of all the property expenses, exclusive of the debt service or mortgage payments on the loan. And so, you know, you can see the list of operating expenses, you know, every real estate taxes, insurance, utilities, repairs, management expenses, administrative, liquid, you've got salaries, you've got landscape, you've got platform, you've got money. And then this is something that most building, most multifamily lenders require to building reserve, which basically is a force savings account building. Typically take a reserve of $250 per apartment per year, which is paid monthly along with your principal interest payments. That goes into a savings account for the building. So 10 years from now, when the building is new roof, we have a, we have a little nest egg to make sure that it can get this maintained and along. So that, so that's income and expenses. So we subtract the income from the expenses, and then we get what's called net operating income. Or, it's an OI, or, and that, the NOI is what's left over to pay the debt service payments or the mortgage payments. And the remainder is, becomes profit for the developer or cash flow. Or it could become, or it's cushion in the event that something happens. So operating expenses go up, rents drop, you know, things happening. It's, it's cushion for the, for the, for the lender as well as potential profit for the developer if things go wrong. So typically, we take the gross potential income. So we take all the, we add all the rents that they collect monthly. We subtract the vacancy loss, which is something between 5% and 10%. And that's just because, you know, apartments turnover, stores close, times have tended to compete rent, you know, so it's, it's a subtraction. You typically don't get 100% of your rental income per year because of, because of vacancies or, or we'll go back and not paying for rent. So I'm going to use a real-life example, as you said, of a real project that we did in East End, Newburgh. These young guys who actually came up from Brooklyn and decided to make their home in, in Newburgh. And they started buying small properties in East End and renovating them into houses. And I changed the address here to protect the innocent, but it's nice to say this is a real project in East End, Newburgh. And, and so they can build it. And it's even been renovated into five apartments and one storefront. And then I'm showing the income here. The rents were just shy of $1,200 a month for the apartments. That was the average rent. There was a store that was paying $1,000 a month for, for their lease. And then, so that gives the gross income here of $71,000 on the residential rents and $12,000 on the retail rents. And we had to subtract vacancy from that. So we had about $5,000 allowance for the, for the residential and about $1,200 for the, for the retail space. So the net income goes down from $82,000 to $77,000. So that's what we're projecting is going to collapse, hopefully. But what happens if one tenant here, one of these wives stops paying rent for six months? And you have to wait, and that takes another few months. All of a sudden, you don't have 7% vacancy allowance. You probably have a 20%. So there's a risk with that. But generally, properties operate in these kind of vacancy levels. So then, so we know what our net effective income is. This is what we're collecting, $77,000. But what are the expenses? Okay, so we've got all our taxes and insurance and everything else. So we've got $38,000 in operating expenses. And we're, we have a net effective income after vacancy of $77,000, total operating expenses of $38,000. And that gives us a net operating income to pay debt service and profit of $39,000. So how do we size the loan based on that? So that's $39,000 net operating income. Recapitated, we could loan $440,000 on this property over 30 years at 5.2%. And so the debt service principal interest payments on that are $29,000. So this roughly $10,000 is cash flow and profit for the year, hopefully. It all goes well. So the margins can be pretty thin on these properties, particularly smalls. And a lot of Hudson Valley properties are in small buildings. And I don't need to tell you guys that in the Duchess County. There's a lot of properties that are, let's say, less than 20 apartments. That makes up the majority of the housing stock in Hudson Valley. So we look at something, so how do we arrive at this $440,000? We have something which is called debt service coverage. And the debt service coverage is the ratio of the net operating income over the annual debt service. So in this case, it's 1.34%. And somebody told me a long time ago, which made sense to me. That means for every dollar of debt that the owner has to pay, he has a dollar, a 20 to a dollar. Most landowners require a ratio of between 1.2 and 1.3. That means I have an extra 20 or 30 cents per dollar of debt in my pocket. And this is what, this 20 or 30 cents, in this case 34 cents, is, is basically going to be hopefully as a profit. And that's how we, that's how we determine the loan. So remember that 440, it's a key number. The other thing we look at is loan to value, okay? Lenders do not like to loan 100% of the value of a property. Why? Some of those are wrong. We have to sell in foreclosure. We have to foreclose time. Typically, people in foreclosure sell, don't pay the full value of the property. They try to get it for less. So generally, lenders want to keep their maximum loan to value, or LTV, of between 70 and 80%. So going back to our example of 123 Main Street, you take the net operating, how do we determine the value? We divide it by what's called cap rate. Don't worry about what cap rate is. That's expected to be a whole other class. But it's basically an expected return that real estate developers expect in a particular market. In Hudson Valley, cap rate is generally between 6% and 8%. So in this case, if you're using 7, if you're using 7% cap rate, we have a value of $557,000. That means our loan to value was $79,000. So we're within our range of 79 and 8%. So we have our debt service coverage of 1% or better. And we have our loan to value, which doesn't exceed 8%. It's a little bit less than 8%. That's how we determine this 440. Remember 440. Okay, so how does debt service coverage and loan value affect project feasibility? Other, as I said, that's one of the things we're going to talk about today. And it affects the feasibility because they limit the amount that a developer can borrow of a particular project. If a developer can't borrow enough money, the project may not be financially feasible. And remember our sources of capital. We have equity, we have debt, and we have subsidy. We already went over that, so I won't go into that. And then you have development costs for a project. You have what's called acquisition, construction, which is also known as the hard cost. And then you have what we call soft costs. And these are all your professional fees. You've got to pay your architect, your engineer, the appraiser, the title company, surveyor, unimprove lawyer. That's a big number. And then you have your carrying costs. What is it, I start to pay, for this thing that's built, I start to pay real estate taxes on land. I got to have insurance to cover the property and liability. I have to pay utilities because I'm using power tools at the site. And I have construction interest. When we do a construction loan, it's kind of like a credit card for a developer. He draws down on the construction as, as the property progresses and we advance it for work that's in place. So he has that to carry during construction. He's not getting rent yet because it's not built. So that's out of pocket. He's got to bear for that. So those are the development costs. And so here's a real-life example. These are real numbers. The guys, the Brooklyn experts that came up and studied the living in East End, Newburgh, they paid $105,000 for the building. The construction cost is $300,000 and professional fees and carrying costs. So the total cost of this development is over the half a million. We were able to loan $140,000, and so they had to put in $115,000. And that makes sense. That's necessarily the sweet spot for debt and equity. Somewhere around 20% equity. Developers generally don't want to put in more than 30% equity. And here, as you can see, I've also been...
Pause there because I have 7:30, so we'll pick up with the debt service coverage. But yeah, I don't know if any, if we wanted to chat about that or if we want to move straight to the...
Anybody, any questions? We have to get our party started. Welcome, everybody. October 8, 2024 Plan 1. It's a pleasure to everybody here. Thank you, guys, all for coming. John couldn't make it, so I'm in an odd seat tonight. I think we got some business to do first. We have a couple of minutes we need to approve. It looks like we need to approve.
We can't do August because we don't have, for, we don't have a form of... September, we can do.
Okay. So can we do that?
So she had made one at it. I had a couple things I wanted to go over because they're actually pertinent to the, one of the applications.
On September?
On September.
Okay. Okay. So we're going to park August for the moment.
I think we have to. We don't have the...
And I'm just saying it for the, for the record. We're going to park August for the moment, and we're going to go to September. You have some comments on September.
Yeah, here's what it was. On our 19 Henry Street application, first of all, one of the commenters, Carl Schaefer, he is at 86 Catherine Street, not 36. Significant because it has to do with proximity to the property. Should we be actually noting what these people said, at least briefly in the minutes? Because the other commenter was talking about tree cover, and then there was a later discussion with the applicant, and now there's been changes on the plans about tree cover. And it's in Eric's comments among other things, John's comments, pardon me.
The minutes, so I'll just say legally, the minutes only have to include votes taken and the board members that were present. So that's the only, that's the bare minimum legal requirement for minutes. So the minutes that have been prepared also reference where you can access the video. So in addition to the summary you have here, you also have the video that can be accessed by people. But beyond that, it's between you and Mercedes as far as like how detailed you want to get in the description of what was discussed.
I don't, I don't want to make it more difficult than it has to be. We should correct the address, but it...
Okay, no, I'm just going to, in the event of some, a situation like what's mentioned, and there is some, some clarity that needs with respect to the minute, should we be more detailed as a question? Or is it, is it, just point towards the video? How do we address something like what's been said?
So there's a couple of different considerations. One, for your use of minutes, you know, if you want to refer back to minutes as a summary of what was discussed, instead of going back to the video, I guess it would be more helpful to have a description for like litigation purposes. If any decision of the board were challenged, the minutes are part of the record, but so is the video.
Just as the video.
So all of that could be provided to the court, or a transcript of the video could be provided to the court. So we don't lose anything from a, you know, record perspective by, by not including the summary in the minutes. And then there's, of course, for the benefit of the public, it's, you know, same for, for your considerations. If you want a description in the, you know, narrative description in the minutes versus going to the videotape.
Yeah.
Are there ever guidelines about ways to avoid editorializing? By the way, you summarized the minutes. Do you understand what I'm saying? Like selectively pulling out agenda items, right?
Yeah, if you, if you try to paraphrase public comment, you may not capture, you know...
But also, Mr. Smith made a poor comment, right? But also, it might be useful for the casual person or whatever to be able to understand, to track the discussion, right?
Or maybe the best thing is to go to the video, though, because the video would reflect the more accurate version of everything. So it's probably more advantageous to point to the video, to avoid any discrepancies.
I think so.
Yeah, as opposed to language tone inflections, which can't be reflected in the minutes, which can't be seen in the video, so...
I mean, some people make the effort, but there's a point of how it's, you know...
It's a slippery slope of, you know, if you miss something, you don't miss something. A period and a comma in the wrong place could be the difference. So pointing to the videotape, I think, is part of the, so for the purpose of our business, can I have a motion to approve with the modifications, the minutes for September 10, 2024?
Motion. Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So August parks, okay. So we're going to go to our regular business. Was there, Jennifer was just going back to my, my videotape in my mind. Okay, we're good. We're going back to item number one, continued public hearing and continued review of application for site plan approval and subdivision approval, 19 Henry Street Town Home submitted by Larry Joseph Builders. Now, I believe last meeting there was a, have you prepared the documents?
Yes, yeah. So at the last meeting, the board directed my office to prepare secret documents for your review for tonight. You do have those before you have the short form, part two, that's been filled out for your review, and then part three with the narrative that's been attached supporting a negative declaration, finding there's no significant adverse environmental impacts. And this is available on the website and was circulated to the board a few days ago.
Okay, excellent. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Well, before we, before we do that, you should act on SECRE first. So just as far as sequencing goes, act on SECRE. Then we can basically reopen the site plan public hearing that's currently extended from last month. And then you have a subdivision public hearing that's going to be opened brand new tonight.
Okay, excellent. So let's go to comments on this first. On item one, bear with me for a second.
Yep, I can start. I just had one, my last letter from last month was that all comments had been addressed. I just had one comment on this plan. When looking at the photometrics, I saw something I had missed before, that it looked like the max lighting level was saying 10.3 foot candles, but I didn't see that reflected in the photometrics. I just thought that was a, probably a point of correction.
Michael, speak to that.
Okay. Just because that is kind of bright, so I was wondering where it was on the site.
It's not a typo. It's actually the brightest light directly beneath those lights. They're only eight feet high. They're in that little vestibule area. So they are hitting that bright right there.
The front of the property, right?
Not, yeah, no, not anywhere near the property. It's just directly...
It's the front porch is what I think.
Yeah, yeah. The front porch light. Okay. Well, I just, so that is a high level, but if it's right underneath it and it's kind of enclosed, then I guess that makes a little bit more sense. And then there is no lighting in the rear? They're not proposing any rear porch lights?
Well, aside from like a normal light you would buy at Home Depot over your slider, you can't model those.
Twinkle lights or...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that was the only thing that I was, that I was noting is that, I mean, the overall lighting levels on the site, right, are, if you average it all out, are 0.27, and that's foot candles, and that's the stipulation with the code that those should not be higher than one. So they are meeting that. 10.3 is kind of bright, but if it's at your front door, I think the applicant could probably make an argument for why it's that bright at the front door. But that was my one comment, is I had noticed that kind of higher level of a max there. I think the other benefit is that it's in the front of the property, it's not in the rear. You know, I wanted to make sure it wasn't the rear property, kind of looking into the, shining into the backyards of the neighbors or anything like that. So that was the, my one comment.
Okay, so in, but in light of it being not a, not a typo, are you comfortable with? I just want to make sure because...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, there is no regulation in the code that really talks about that max level. Their average is meeting the code requirement. I think what we've talked about in the past on site plans is, you know, anything over five foot candles is often, you start to feel like you're indoors, right? So just asking the necessity of that. So I think we would balance that higher level with need for safety. If, I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to that more, but that would be, that would be my comment.
Okay, so can, can we just get, just to make sure we clarify that? If the applicant wanted to speak to why it's so bright?
I think I'm just going to infer, but I believe it's proximity to the parking lot across the street. It's a pretty, you know, busy area, I think, for purposes is, was pointing about the plan or it's specifically over the entranceway. So I think that was the limited, knowing that it's supposed to be walkable or encouraging all that. I think it's like anything else, it's just the front door, and it's not extending to the property line, it's just over the front entry.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the other important part is, it's not, it's not transferring any kind of glare light levels over the property line, so...
Is it like a, just a regular porch light, or is it some high intensity outdoor light?
It's, it is, it's a, it's an LED light. It's 3000K, I think 15 watts. It's the smallest light we could find to model. So it's not, it's not like these sodium highlighted lights you see in a, it's like a standard household light over a door.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a few comments with regards to the subdivision plat that was submitted. I know there's going to be access easements around the sides of the buildings to allow the homeowners that are located in the center to have abilities to get to their rear yards. But the question was, what if people install fences? Are we going to prohibit people from installing fences along their rear yard, property lines running to the back lot? Or are they going to be required to have gates put in? The other two with regards to the subdivision plat are just cleaning up the easement drawings that were on the plans to eliminate crossover. Then with regards to the plan, there's a minor correction that has to be done on the tree planting deep detail. And then I was thinking a note should be added to the plans with regards to that the homeowners are responsible to maintain the trees on their respective parcel and to replace it if the tree dies or is taken down. You know, if they're going to provide screening to the neighbors, it needs to be maintained for longevity.
We have no objection to all those. We didn't, sorry to interrupt. We didn't, we intend to include those, including a note saying no fences, you know, or to the extent practicable, a gate is necessary. Private easement rights would also apply. So no one could do that, or if somebody did, it would be a private matter between parties.
Right, I'd hate to see one of the interior homeowners have to try to come around the back and they can't get through a fence.
Yeah, so we'll add a note to that effect.
Or emergency responders, firemen. There may be windows that are required for fireman access in the rear. I don't know.
I just want to, I want to ask, how is the tree situation normally handled? I mean, it's, these are town homes, there's not going to be an HOA, right? There's really nobody else we could put the burden on?
Right, it's on the... These are going to be individual, simple...
They're going to be, they're individual lots, so they are controlled. The only access easement was just so that if you had a lawnmower or something you wanted to swing around the back, that there was no, the people in the middle couldn't mow their lawn, you know, it was just, that was the limitation there. So it would be on the property, the respective property, and each lot will be responsible.
Well, I mean, it's a matter of property, right? Since the easements, the access easements are recorded...
So is the site plan. So the site plan is there, there'll be notes on the site plan. If they're not there, they're noncompliance with the site plan, the building department can issue a violation for not complying.
It'll be, it'll be on file with the city of Beacon, so...
If the easements are recorded for access for the adjacent landowner, you know, adjacent townhome access, is legal proposition, we've taken care of it. Should we be doing anything more here to make, to try to avoid this being an issue?
If I may, we've seen, yeah, we've seen instances where neighbor, where we've installed trees on a neighbor's property rather than on our own, and then there, there's a different set of responsibilities. So there may be agreements like that. These are installed on the property, so there will be a site plan condition and enforceable. So neighbor A says tree B fell, the building department can say it's on the site plan, you as the owner are responsible for replacing it. The only other instance where you have something recorded like that is typically if you're doing it on someone else's property. But you're absolutely right, if there was HOA or other management structures, you could do it that way. But the site plan is, is another enforcement mechanism for this specific purpose. It's not always a requirement that the trees be maintained, but the board has thought that condition through because of the neighbor's comments and are considering. So it will be on the site plan, and we can note, I think we already have noted that they need to be replaced.
John?
No comments. No questions on the short form or the narrative for secret?
Fine, thank you.
So we can make a...
So yeah, yeah, so next step would be a motion to adopt the SECRE negative declaration. And then you can go ahead and open the public hearing portion.
Okay, can I have that motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Do a second. Jack, a second.
Okay. He's the second.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yes.
It's very flat. All right, can I have a motion to re, because we're reopening this from...
The site plan.
The site plan.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
But we're also opening the subdivision.
And, and we can do them both simultaneously, or, okay.
Okay, so I'll move to reopen site plan approval on the application as well as open the public hear, reopen the public hearing on site plan approval as well as opening view on subdivision, right? Or is this public hearing on the subdivision application?
All right. That's your motion. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening. For the record, Taylor Palmer, I'll keep this very brief, as the board had a good discussion of what we're here for. As mentioned, we are continuing our site plan public hearing and also opening the subdivision aspect for these four two-story attached townhomes at 19 Henry Street. For the record and for the public, we did update the notices and all the mailings for the new public hearing for the subdivision. We did provide a comprehensive summary of the project at our last meeting, but I'll give a quick overview for the benefit of this evening. Our supplemental submission dated September 24th included additional refinements to that site plan and subdivision plat, many of the comments which you just heard from your board. But specifically the changes from our last meeting is we did update a planting plan to include seven Fuji Giant, Green Giant, trees along the rear property line, which would provide screening for neighbors that were previously proposed red maples. We did revise the plat to include references to the drainage easements and the proposed lots for underground roof drain pipes, as well as the pedestrian easements that we just discussed with the board. So those were the changes responsive to board and member of the public that had spoken at the last meeting, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just, is anyone here from the public for this particular application?
Teresa Craft, since this public hearing was reopened, I'll make that comment. I'm still opposed to this type of housing on Henry Street location, and I don't want to see this type of formula used throughout the rest of the city of Beacon. The neighbors, the current neighbors behind, around, will be forced to live next to eight to 20 people, and this will impact their quality of life. But I also want to say that this could all become Airbnbs, so you'll have no control over any lighting, noise, anything that comes into there. I think the city is, has like 60-something registered Airbnbs, and we all know that there's hundreds throughout the city. I believe this will happen there, too. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public for this? So we're going to open...
We should also mention the email comment that you received.
Yes, 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 yes. There were two?
Yeah, sure. So the board did also receive by way of public comment, written comment sent to Mercedes Press, who circulated to the board members from the neighboring property owner at 21 Henry Street. And that the, the comments are part of the record, but essentially, I think the main gist of the comment was discussing the setback between the two properties.
Thank you. Let's just go around the board real quick. So...
I, I don't really have any comments beyond what I said before we opened the hearing, so... You know, I have to tell you, I had a belated thought, but this may not be relevant, that if the paving was used pavers, like decorative pavers with infiltration instead of asphalt, that it might improve the ability, that one of the problems, one of the things that's going to impact this visually, and probably the reaction to it, is the fact that there'll be a bunch of curb cuts and driveways in an area now that just has one. And that was one way to make it less than the visual impact. But I, I'm not that committed to it, and I think it'd be an improvement, and I would, I would do it if it was my project.
So just in regard to that public comment that we received, the email, if I remember the gist of it, the concern was that the distance between the new development and the adjacent property to the east, I think, right? Was there anything, I mean, we've gone through the required setbacks and the site plan...
No, they are zoning compliant.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
That's it, that's all I have, thanks.
I don't have any other comments. The only thing that's different is that it's a subdivision. I feel like we've reviewed the design issues to date, and so I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. And just going back, anyone else from the public want to make any comments on this at all? Okay, so at this point, then we can close the public hearing. Motion?
Motion.
To, going back to close the...
Site plan public hearing?
The site plan and the subdivision public hearing.
The site plan and the subdivision public hearing.
Seconded by Lynn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now...
Next step would be to direct my office to prepare a resolution for your next meeting.
You have it? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're done with, with 19 Henry Street. Can we move on to the next agenda?
We're done. Sure.
I'll sit down for a second.
Right.
I'll be right back.
Right back, right. We'll move on to item number two, continued review. Continued review of application for site plan and subdivision approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, 45 Beakman Street, High Street and High Street, submitted by Beakman Arts Center LLC and Bay Ridge Studios LLC. Hello again.
Good evening again, acting chairman, for the record. Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy and Vader, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, I am joined by our project architect, R.A. Siegel, whose anniversary is tonight.
Oh, happy anniversary, right?
We always join each other on Valentine's Day and anniversaries. It's becoming too much. R.A., I don't know where we're going tonight, but I guess, our project engineer is Justin Dates of Colliers and Rich D'Andrea, also from Colliers for our traffic consultant. So as the board is aware, at our September 10th meeting, the planning board referred this to the ARB Subcommittee for the review, and our architect met with that committee yesterday to review the project in greater detail. To assist the ARB in its review, our most recent submission, some of the pretty pictures that are up on the screen, included some additional photo realistic renderings that included views of the project from Beakman Street and High Street, and now shows a stairway at the end. And of course, R.A. will walk through some of these details. At the end of High Street, building onto Beakman, that was one of the requests from the board in our discussion. And we also have the Route 9D with City Hall in the background. Some of the renderings you'll see tonight have also been enhanced further to also represent other development in the area, including the view, beacon views, excuse me, west end lofts, and some of the other development in the corridor, and we're going to start to work on the other side of 9D as well. The renderings were designed to demonstrate how the buildings are intended to relate to the existing buildings in the surrounding area and the use of their materials, proportions, and scale as well. So as R.A. will show you all in just a minute, again, as I mentioned, we did update, you know, the visuals to include some of those additional development in the area. Our submission also included an updated INI report and landscaping plan, as well as a parking memo that was updated by Mr. D'Andrea. The INI report confirms that the site observations and testing have not revealed stormwater connections to the city's sanitary sewer system. And as Justin will review with the board in a minute, the updated landscaping plan demonstrates that the project has been refined to try and respond to board comments and the surrounding streetscape to enhance the visitor experience. So I'll let those guys talk about the specific updates. And then Rich will briefly speak to the parking memorandum, which was adjusted to reflect to the parking memorandum, which was adjusted to reflect the city's new parking regulations that were adopted, and how the property still complies with those regulations. Now, it wouldn't be an anniversary, I didn't hop on my soapbox for a minute here and say one thing, lovely. Acting Chairman is here, Mr. Chairman's probably going to watch this at home. I did just want to quickly note a few things. The renderings and our detailed submissions have been just that, detailed. We've made a lot of effort to date, including voluntarily approaching the New York State DOT for additional approvals, exemplary of the applicant's ongoing commitment to constructing the best project possible. Our efforts reveal a clear intention to give the property new life and create a new opportunity for the city's downtown area. While certain comments at the planning board's meeting last month may downplay these efforts, these comments did not fairly provide a reasonable context for what the application is proposing here and the vision that was set forth in the city's comprehensive planning documents, and has been meticulously detailed in our prior submissions. To say that those first renderings have evolved over a series of months is to, that, excuse me, to say first issue renderings that have evolved over a series of months is a missed opportunity ignores the reality of the situation the applicant finds itself in. The only missed opportunity would be if the applicant didn't breathe new life into this site, this underutilized property. The applicant is creating a new opportunity at this site, one that developers and the prior owners couldn't achieve. He's working with the New York State Department of Transportation to take back what urban renewal took away, to give that back through reimagining, reengineering this prominent corner that has been seen, multifamily development all around it, including New City Hall and the fire department. The project is and will create opportunities to realize these visions set forth in your comprehensive plan, and is to create linkages to Main Street and the train station. We hear the words iconic, and we think of Taj Mahal, the Eiffel Tower, Big Ben, the Empire State Building. Those are iconic buildings. Well, this project, and the beacon architect, I should say, remain committing to making this big little beacon, or Beacon Empire State Building. It's made by beaconites for beaconites, and most importantly, it's been designed and refined throughout this process, and we're by no means done, but I think it's important to address those comments because this project is continually committed to it, and we want to make sure it gets there. We know the ARB just got its hands into it, but we thought it was important to address that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we had a, a very good and productive meeting with Natalie in the ARB Subcommittee yesterday, that there was, you know, specific recommendations that we're looking at incorporating into the design. We're also revisiting the connection at the, let me just get the landscape drawing up here. At, at the corner of 9D and Beacon, where, and, and I, I spoke to Justin about it this morning, and we, we think we have a way to approach that, so we, we can connect that corner and, and the plaza there to the corner of the building, and, you know, make, make that work better. And then basically, one, once the design is updated, we'll go back to the ARB and continue to, you know, work out the details on that end. I'll just show you the updated renderings that, as Taylor mentioned, has a little bit more context.
In that connection, can I interrupt you and ask a question?
Yeah.
Real quick? Those renderings, on sheet five, towards the bottom, we've got elevations on the building. Yeah. And if you zoom in, the, the bottom line is the corner feature on both of the buildings is different on that elevation than it is on the, the renderings that follow, the diff-
Right.
You know, whether it's a pointy top tower, or whether it's a glass.
Yeah, I, I have my little caveat note on the bottom of the page there. That, that was just really intended to show the scale of the, the building as the, you know, as you see it cut through the sidewalk, so.
Okay, so the one in the renderings is what you're on right now?
Yeah.
Okay. That was the question.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, these, this version of the renderings with the additional context were not submitted, but we did review those yesterday, and, you know, they, they do show the buildings with some of the other developments around.
And, and maybe just for people who weren't, who didn't have the context, the, the comment you were talking about was to, to make the arcade accessible from the corner of Beacon and 9D and that plaza area where.
Right.
So that there's a, a good pedestrian access to try to get that space.
Yeah, and, and that's what I spoke with Justin about today. We, we were trying to figure out a way to work with the grading, because it's a little difficult over there. It's the DOT property. There's some utilities under there, but we, I, I think we came up with an approach, and then that, that'll be shown on the next submission.
Just a quick question. When you say utilities, is that, are there like manhole covers that you would have to extend? That sort of thing?
There are pipes under there, or?
There's existing stormwater sanitary sewer that come through, like.
So you'd have to build a structure to level that grade?
Well, no, there's no, there's no, no structures or tie-ins there proposed.
Okay.
It's just there's existing pipes there that are roughly, I believe like 10 feet down, so we're really trying to minimize any more fill that we would put over top of that.
Then it's not so, because there's two things that I thought of, which I, I'm just, is that if there is a roadway, it requires different fill than, than for the building, right? It requires structural fill or something, right? If you put an on-ramp there, you don't want to do that, it's not part of your scope, I'm assuming. Or they, or the city would, the state would have to do that later. The other issue would be the, you'd be doing work on state property, right? That you'd have to get the approval and go through state approval process. Because I, I think it's a big, I personally, it's, it's an opportunity, and I, I just want to find out how difficult it is to, to take advantage of it.
So, two, two things. So, as far as the, the future turn lane, that sketch that we showed several, several months ago, we looked at that actually today, just to see how that would fit with what we're talking about on the corner now. It would work, we went up there, massaged it a little bit, and just make sure that it works now and works in the future if that ever, that right turn lane does go ahead. But there's plenty of room to do all that. And we'll show that sketch, just probably next month. The other piece that you're talking about, about can you use that area for, to do these things, and what does the DOT would need because it's on their property, it's, it's all doable from what I see. It's mostly just hardscape kind of sidewalk type treatments, right? So, and landscaping, all those things DOT typically allows in there right away, it's when you get into larger structures where, and, and more permanent structures that you have more of an issue, right? So, I think we'll have to go through an approval process with DOT for this, obviously, but from what I see, in my opinion, it's all, it's all doable and typical for stuff that can be done in DOT right away.
Because I, I, I don't want to suggest something that's impossible to do.
Sure.
But I think there's a public interest, and I think the state might want to help in some way, in order to make that part of their easement and that part of the city plan more publicly accessible, that broader area to allow for that turning lane later, and also the, the, the pedestrian connection up 9D, right?
Right.
Towards the bridge, to still be continuous and, and pleasant, you know, to improve the, the pedestrian experience in that whole area. And if there's a way to plan it out where you're not, because I understand, like, trying to avoid engaging other agencies and other things, that's, that's completely understandable, and, and also things that you don't have approval for, you can't get, right? If, if you don't, that, that's understandable as well, but I think we should really try, if we can, to make that portion of the street, because the turning lane may not ever happen, so that in both scenarios, either there isn't a turning lane, or if there is a turning lane, that, that the pedestrian experience isn't sort of a precarious forgotten no-man's land, right?
Right, absolutely, yeah. I think that makes total sense, and the idea would also be that if the right turn lane did happen, that you're not reconstructing the entire thing also.
Right, right. And not, you know, I don't think anybody wants to do unreasonable things, but you don't want to preclude improvements later, right?
Yep.
Or a better situation later, or you don't want to take advantage of the opportunity now if, if, if there's ways for street improvements to be funded, you know, that aren't, you know, necessarily your, your area of responsibility.
Okay.
Yes, I think, I think that's sort of the update on the, on the design end, so we're, we're going to work on those items and, and, you know, definitely work on weaving that corner together, and then we'll be back with more next month, and back to the ARB as well. Okay, thanks.
I think I was just going to give an update on the, just the, the parking memo and, and some other updates on DOT that we didn't talk about. So, we did, we were asked last month to provide just the, an updated parking analysis based on the changes that were done in the, the change, the adopted, the new adopted parking code. So, we went through that, it doesn't drastically change the, anything in the analysis necessarily, but really, the, the code now specifies that the parking standards that are in the code are now a maximum parking standard for the, for the site. So, when you look at that, now the 109 spaces that were required before are now the 109 spaces that are now a maximum. We then, you know, still did our shared parking analysis that was done before, it's the same analysis. At the end of the day, we're still looking at 88 parking spaces being what we feel is the appropriate number of parking spaces. Doesn't take any credit for the proximity of the train station, bike usage, any of that, it's just straight parking, a shared parking analysis based on utilization of the different uses at different times of the day. So, that, we, we kind of feel that 88 parking spaces is still the appropriate number of parking spaces for the, the site. And then, just to give you an update on a couple of other things on the DOT end of things, so, we had been talking about for a couple of months, having a call with DOT, we finally were able to make that happen about two weeks ago. There's, we're still waiting for some formal feedback from them after that, which we were hoping to have before this meeting, but we haven't received yet. Couple of things that came out of that, generally DOT was in favor of the timing and phasing modifications that we were recommending for the intersection, but one thing that I did find out that wasn't, was new information to me, was that the state actually has an adaptive traffic signal software system that's in play at that intersection and going up 9D. It's not functioning at the moment, but it's, it's, it's installed, so they're working on getting that functioning. So that may change things a little bit, so they were going to give us some feedback on that when they provided their written comments. The other thing that they did note is that there is no adaptive traffic signal software at the Main Street intersection, so that may be something that they're looking at as well. And I'm not sure if you guys know what adaptive is.
No.
Okay, so, I meant, so just to, to step back on that. So adaptive traffic signal software is, is, it's additional software that gets added on to the traffic signal controller that really allows the signal to better adapt to surges in traffic, right? So, specifically, you think about the train station, when you have got a surge of traffic coming out of the train station, the, the signal can actually learn that over time. So every day at 5:15, the train comes and there's a surge of traffic, the signal can learn that over time, and it'd be ready to adjust for that ahead of time. And it, it can also communicate with other signals that have this software along the corridor, and help to move traffic through the corridor to get.
Is it video?
It's, there's already video out there, if you look out there, there's a camera, it looks like a, a bell camera, so that there is video that's involved, and that's just the, the detection portion of it. And then this is just a, it's almost like an AI software, it's not exactly that, but it's kind of like that, that is in the controller and, and really functions as a addition on top of what is typically done is like a, a time-based timings, right? So, at this time of the day, we're going to run 30 seconds on this one phase, this one approach, and 20 seconds on the other approach, right? Now, with the adaptive, there really isn't necessarily a, a timing that's associated with it. This, this, the program has the ability to just kind of modify things within, within some parameters, really on the fly as traffic surges change on different movements and approaches.
And is that all the way up to the bridge lights?
It goes all the way up to the bridge lights, yes. Now, again, I don't, I don't think any of it's functioning at the moment, but they do have it in play. I would agree.
Not lately, no.
I wonder if it's similar, they, they have in tall buildings, elevator banks, they have similar demand management.
Probably, very similar, right? Similar idea, right? So, so that, that was something that was, that was, that I hadn't, was not aware of until we had that call. So that'll be part of, all part of what we're doing here. We did discuss the, you know, the future right turn lane, DOT is in favor of it, they, we told them, look, it's not part of our proposal for this project, DOT indicated they have no money as to do it themselves, so it's just kind of a, how do we get that accomplished in the future if that's something that the city wants to see? And then, lastly, you know, we've been talking about the land acquisition for the frontage there, DOT is just going through a detailed review now of their, internally of, of that right of way that we're looking to acquire, and then once that's complete, they'll let us know that everything's good, and then it'll, it goes through a process up in Albany, so there's some, some work to be done there, but it is in, in the process.
How long does that process take, Rich, once you've told me?
Well, we started that, when, we started that in August? Yeah, well, yeah, really, but when we made the last, June, maybe? Yeah. So, we had a call with, another call with them in August is what it was. It's probably close to a, a year by the time we're said and done, so.
Thank you.
So Ken Warstead from Creighton Manning wanted me to know, he's not here tonight, obviously, but he is reviewing the shared, the updated shared parking memo that was provided by Colliers, and he'll have updated comments for the board on that, and also, Randall, your microphone is off. That's from Pete.
About the parking study, I was, I thought it'd be really informative to everybody that worked so hard, I know the council worked forever on this new parking, and it's, it's really useful for, to get the feedback of what the actual effect of it was, what, what changed, you know, from the studies, what was, what was, what the requirements were with the old code and what they are now. And this is like a perfect example, if, it probably wouldn't be that tough, you probably have the numbers in the back of a legal pad or something, of like how, how your design changed because of the code, the new parking regulations, and also how it affects, you know, then you could extrapolate how it would affect parking supply and demand going forward for other developments, right?
Yeah, I mean, for this specific development, I don't know that it really changed much, right? Because the standards kind of went from a minimum to a maximum.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Right? When you get to other, and I'm sure we'll talk about this on other projects going forward, when you get to other areas of the city where you have a minimum and a maximum that's, that are both identified, right? Now you have to fall within that, that range, and.
Gotcha.
We have to really show you how we think that the number we come up with is the number, right? And it's up to you guys to decide what's the actual.
So previously, were you seeking, you were seeking a waiver under a previous, right? Because you weren't meeting the minimum before, there wasn't.
Previously, we were requesting a waiver for the reduction parking from the 109 to the 88 based on shared parking.
And so now you no longer have to, I mean, that would be a change.
Correct.
You didn't change your design, but you no longer have to seek a waiver for that.
But it is still the planning board's decision, so.
Yeah.
It's, they're allowed to have a maximum of 109 spaces, right? But they're presenting that 88 is the right number, but ultimately, that's your decision, whether 88 is the right number or not.
I think to that point, it would be helpful, I, you know, I, I understand like the use of IT standards in the shared parking agreement, but I think it would be helpful for the board to understand how those 88 spaces will be managed, right? So you have 64 apartment units, just under 15,000 square feet of commercial, so like, is the intent to advertise these units as one car space per unit, right? So that's 64, and then the other 22 spaces are going to be dedicated to employees of the commercial space, or where will visitors, you know, like, just to how, it's a little bit down the line, I think, in thinking about operation, but how you intend for that to like actually function, you know, on, what is this building?
Yeah, I, I think we, we can, we can talk to, you know, our client about that a little bit more, but the way the shared parking works right now is it assumes that all the spaces are shared between the residential and commercial.
So that you don't plan to mark them at all in terms of these are residential spaces?
Correct.
Yeah, they're just first come, first served?
Right.
Okay. And then the other piece, I think, in terms of like, I don't know if the board has questions about the 88, but if we start to get there, I think the other aspect in the new zoning code is looking a little bit more away from the standard IT standards and then instead trying to reference local developments.
Yep.
Right? So if you see other residential units at these price points that are currently functioning, what's the actual utilization rate that they're seeing in their parking facility there?
Right.
You know, I think that kind of information will be helpful, especially if you can find something approximate to the train station to show, okay, these two bedroom units are actually only using one point whatever space per unit, and I think that would be a helpful comparison.
Sure.
Wait, flip side of the coin here. Precisely because we're this close to the train station, 10 or 15 years ago, I used to be able to like drive, I forget the name of the street, but like four blocks up the street from the train station and park, and tons of people were doing it, and then finally one day, the city came in and expanded the two-hour only or four-hour only covered as parking signs, so you couldn't do that anymore. If you're not doing something to restrict your parks there, how are you going to keep people from me, from parking, like me, from parking in your parking lot and commuting on the train?
Well, there's still going to, yeah, there's still going to be no parking signs for like non-users. I'm sure, you know, if you, like, if any other owner of a property, if they saw somebody parking there and walking, clearly walking to the train station, you would go have that car towed, right? So.
Have you tried to get a car towed in the city of Beacon? They want, the, the tow truck companies don't want to tow unless there's a ticket on there and a police officer directing to, they're concerned about getting charged with. and a police officer directing to, they're concerned about getting charged with auto theft, literally. I got a car stuck on my, in my driveway, I couldn't get towed. I don't, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. I'll probably.
We're gonna buy a lot of those stickers that they stick right on the driver's side window and take forever to get off. I know that my landlord used to do that and it works very well. Right, pink and orange, can't get that off with Gooby gone or anything. Those things stay on there forever. But we'll, we'll look at, seriously, we'll look into that, whether there's enforcement, you know, whether it's, they have to be out there and, you know, monitoring, but it's, it is private, they're gonna want their commercial tenants to be.
Right.
Functional and usable and.
Yeah, I just, I, I know for a fact this has been an issue, anything that's walkable with a train station.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I, I can go quickly with the comments, cause I think I really only commented on kind of architecture and design and then the kind of streetscape landscaping improvements. I think we're trying to nail that down before we go deeper into, into the other design aspects. So, I think the main, my main two points, one A and one B have kind of been touched on. It's really focusing on, as it should be, I think the focal point of this development is the corner, right? And we're using the clock tower and everything to make that a focal point. But as we've touched on, if I'm somebody walking towards this building and I see this focal point.
Duck it in.
I can't get to it directly? I have to kind of maybe go down and like find a way around? So, I love the idea that you guys were adding a little bit of like a pocket park, sculpture park kind of situation there. If that could instead be some kind of entryway, maybe that's what makes it more of a grand, like an entrance. Like I just think that if you're gonna, if the architecture stays the way it is and you are gonna highlight that corner, there should be a way, that should be like the entrance to.
Yes, they're looking at the grading and that's being worked into the design.
Yeah, and so that, that just ties into, you know, the, the section of the code talking about storefront entrances should be prominent and easily identifiable and I think accessible. And that kind of comes into the other piece and we, Ari, we talked about this a lot in the, in the ARB session, so I know you're thinking about it. But I think that other aspect of storefront entrances being prominent and easily identifiable, the heaviness of the ground floor architecture with the, with the arcade, while an interesting architectural feature, I think it is making the entrances to the storefronts feel a bit recessed and kind of back. So, what, how would the businesses in there be identified? How would people know, you know, like that, maybe it's signage, maybe it's kind of lighter, whatever. But I feel like that section of the code, talking about these various commercial entrances being clearly identifiable, I think that's getting a loss a little bit behind the heavy brick. So, that was one of my comments there. Material color shall complement the historic buildings of the block. So, I think we talked about this a little bit too of, there's a few different architectural features in here, but I focus on the brick and the color of the brick that I think, you know, what's, what we typically see is kind of material boards. And maybe this will happen once we get a little bit further down, but like a material board, so we can see exactly what the color of this brick is gonna be and kind of see it in comparison with a sample of the metal or the glass aspects of it, just so we can.
Yeah, that'll be, Ari will definitely bring that to ARB.
See that. And then the fourth piece, while it doesn't necessarily tie directly to a section of the code, this was talked about in the ARB work session. So, the code, and I see what you're trying to do here, cause the code does say, right, in the linkage district, larger buildings have to incorporate significant breaks and like play in the facade to try and break it up. So, I see that's what you're trying to do with the difference of materials and pushing in and pushing out. And I think my one comment is that right now it feels like there, it's a little bit, it's a little bit overwhelming that there's maybe too much of that. And I think maybe, so maybe we corrected, we overcorrected to try and add that variation. I think what we talked a lot about in the ARB session was establishing a little bit more of a consistent rhythm, so that people can kind of follow that along. I think you can still keep a lot of the breaks and stuff that you're having, but maybe a little bit more of a smooth rhythm between them, I think would, would help improve that. So, that was it on the architecture piece for now. The streetscape, I know I keep having comments about the pedestrian clearway and kind of cross-sections, and now I'm realizing maybe cross-sections aren't the best way to get at it. Your renderings are really nice, right? And very detailed. And so maybe once the architectural, there's just some key points because of the change of grade of this site that you're working with, that I think there's key points where we're really gonna wanna zoom in and see what it feels like to be a pedestrian on that sidewalk there. You know, it's like maybe where the gap is, where you're doing that, like the landscaping bioswale, like what, you know, give us a sense of what that looks like, maybe in one of the renderings. I think this corner, this front corner piece is one of those other sections. So, you gave us those two cross-sections that you've kind of been giving us the whole time. And I, you know, I still feel like it's kind of difficult to, I know the site varies a lot throughout that, so it's still a little bit hard to kind of feel what the pedestrian's gonna feel. And I think you can maybe do that with some of your, the really great renderings that you do as this kind of evolves. So, like.
And connect it with the landscaping plan, so that it is actually reflective of what
the landscaping plan is. And then I think that, I think that's the, maybe the better way to get that across. And then the one aspect I just want to try, I, I know we clarified now and there is no trees, there's no trees in the street transition zone, right? There now, what we're, what's being retained, just so the board knows, is that existing kind of decorative, it's like a decorative brick three foot wide area is what's being retained. If we can go back to the landscaping plan, I think that's where we see it the best there. So, there's no longer any, I think previously we had maybe been showing in the cross-sections that there was gonna be trees in the street transition zone, like in between the walkway, the sidewalk and the street. And that's now kind of been eliminated and the landscaping is pushed up against the building. So, maybe we could talk about that, because I think there was a lot of value in having a vertical separation between the pedestrian clearway. The code does allow the planning board to require street trees every 30 to 40 feet there. So, maybe we could hear a little bit about the limitations that you're working with there. And I think, I think that's it for like my main, my main comments right now, yeah.
Do you want me to touch on that?
Yep.
Okay. Justin Dates, Colliers Engineering Design. So, just for context, the grade change from 9D on Beekman down to High Street, it's about 25 feet, right? So, from the top intersection all the way down, you know, that's, that's the delta between the, the grades. So, what we're trying to do with, you know, establishing, you know, the, the long alignment of the building along each of these, there's about eight feet of, of grade change across each face of the building, all right? So, that's why what we're trying to do is focus our, our access points, right now where we have, it's kind of mid-building, you know, right? Where you would come in, you could go straight ahead to get access to the residential units, you would, you would branch right or left to get to the, the commercial access. So, what it does is, is it creates situations or these triangular areas between the back of current sidewalk and the face of the building, where we're trying to make up, we're doing transitions, right? We're doing transitions of grade, cause one is going, you know, down towards the building, the other would be going up. So, we're using those and landscaping in there to, to access that area and make up the, the change in grade. We're doing that in, in various ways with different plant species, mostly native to the, to the region and.
I'm sorry, do you mean visually, like you're making, using the plants to like kind of contain, continue the plane of the floor?
So, no, more so in, in instance where the sidewalk is up high and we're coming down, we're planting out that area because of the grade change. And it's not simply going from the sidewalk and walking directly into the building, right? We have, we're, that's how we're compensating for eight feet of change across the building face, right? So, that's why it is, it's not simply just access right off of the back of the sidewalk throughout the whole arcade there. But the, the plant materials there, shrubs, and we, and we do have some, a smaller deciduous narrow columnar, hornbeam, if you've heard of them. We're using that to give more vertical. And in my opinion, it's, it's, it's a maturity and size of that plant fits within the space that we have in those areas. Similarly, on the High Street building, we're doing the same thing. So, with that building, we're maintaining that kind of brick accent along the back of the curb and then the full width of the sidewalk. And then we have those hornbeams in tree grates, right? So, again, that building as you go down, Beekman, right? The exposure of, of that finished floor below the arcade, you know, grows. So, we're using that again as, as, you know, vertical, the vertical vegetation to break up that, as well as a hedgerow along the, the bottom. Again, just trying to, you know, soften wherever the final building facade material is in both those, those, those instances. So, typically the, the street transition area, as mentioned, is where you would most, where the code talks about putting street trees. As a landscape architect, I've put them further away. I feel that there's more benefit to putting them in the areas that we talked about for the Beekman building and then the couple that were in the tree grates down at the High Street building. The gap that we have in between the two buildings, you know, we're also proposing to put street trees behind the sidewalk again, because there's, there's more real estate, there's more planting bed area there, that I feel that it's a more sustainable location for these trees. If we're gonna try to cram them into that small area between the building and the sidewalk, I think it's detrimental to their health and the stress of those plants. So, I think our proposal is not to have them in that transition area, but move them further away, where I think we have a better sustainability of the landscaping for, for those areas.
Are you describing what you're showing or, or what you want to do?
No, that's what's on, that's what's on the plan, yeah.
Could we have street trees in the brick area?
I would, I would rather not.
The only reason I would give pause to that is we have a large storm drainage line right against that curb line and slightly under that curb line. And I would not want trees on top of that line if we ever have to get in there and maintain That could be a big concern, especially if the roots start getting into those joints of those pipes and.
That makes sense. Just, it's a long stretch with no shade.
You might be able to do it further down, but I'm looking at the upper section being part of a conflict, so.
Which, are you talking about the, the Beekman building?
The whole, you know, the whole walkway from High Street up to 9, there's not a street tree or a shade tree.
There's shade trees in between the two buildings.
Right, but if you're walking on the sidewalk from.
They're directly behind the sidewalk, so it's, I would find that, that, you know, that does provide shade in that particular area there.
That one little, that little moment. I hope you provide a lot of seating right there.
We do, we do, we do have benches along that section as well.
Just to chime into it, I know a lot of this conversation is gonna lead into what ARB review incorporates, but there were comments, I think, in Natalie's memorandum too, potentially about seating areas, benches and the like. So, there's a lot of that, like the sort of final pieces that go into the, this that will also encourage that as you go along, if you needed that additional shade.
I mean, I think that if we can look at the utility plan and find any place to put, you know, street trees for shading the sidewalk, that would be important.
Understood.
I think related to that comment, and this is actually like specifically stated in the code, that the Department of Public Works has these, uh, street sections for this that came out of the linkage plan. And it, what the code says is something like that they can request that those be added. So, I don't, I don't want to make you guys have to have a conversation with another department or division, but it might just, I mean, to your point as well, in terms of the drainage and everything, that it might be beneficial to schedule that conversation as well.
I know DPW is psyched for us to not, so they don't have to mow anymore.
Well, I think we can involve the city administrator as well, because they, I know he's been looking at implementation of the linkage plan, you know, of the linkage plan. So, it might just be good to coordinate on that and see what the improvements are that are being thought of or discussed there.
So, I just have a few minor comments. As they've discussed, they did update the infiltration study that they had performed before. It does show no connection into the sanitary sewer system. I would like to see an elevation from, or one of the elevation or views, I should say, from further up on High Street, from the residents up above. What are they gonna be looking at here, coming from the other side? I mean, we're doing views from across the road, on Beekman, looking up Beekman, but nobody's given any thought to anybody on High Street and further up on High Street. And what are these residents that live there now, we're gonna be looking at? The other thing is with regards to the change in the parking code, every eight spaces, you're supposed to have a tree within the parking space. So, you're gonna have to take a look at maybe modifying your parking layout slightly to account for that.
Okay, we do have the required amount adjacent to the, to the parking areas, they just.
I think the intent of the code is really to break it up first before we start shifting it. And I think it allows the planning board to make that decision, which way we're gonna go.
Yeah, I could, I mean, I, I remember I brought that up on a different project and I believe the, the board had allowed it to be perimeter rather than necessarily islands within the, within the lot.
Right.
I do agree that the intent is obviously to break up the land, the asphalt, right? That is the intent, but I think there's a constraint of the board allowing.
Just take a look at it, Justin. Take a look at it and, and see. I mean, it would be nice to break up some of these large areas with a grass island and a tree. I understand, you know, there might be constraints, some areas due to utilities, due to whatever it may be. But I think you can break some of it up and at least try.
That's good.
That's it. Okay. I'm sorry, Randall.
I, I agree with you on, as far as the views, it would be interesting to see it from a couple of different other angles to really get an idea of what this really looks like. It would really be interesting. Anyway.
Oh, one thing, just an REA, if there's any units on the roofs, make sure they're in the views.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, there's some, some questions.
I don't have any more comments. I think that there was a lot discussed in the ARB on Monday, so.
Yeah, this was just an update.
Yeah, I'll reserve until next spring.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, I had, just so, cause we were talking about the landscaping and it has a, we hadn't talked about it as much in the ARB. One thing I'll say about is like park benches. There's a bench at the Mount Beacon Access Park that Zenit Hudson did, right as you're going up 9D, right? And with the light there, and it's this bench, and you're just looking at down the road and all these cars are just zooming as fast as they can right up at you. It's not a very comfortable or a relaxing place to sit, right? Some people do it for convenience or whatever, and there's no other place to sit. So, this is a fairly busy road, right? So, I wouldn't put, if I was gonna put benches in, I would try to put them in that little landscaped area between the buildings, right? Off to the side, facing each other in like a little cul-de-sac that was a little bit more, rather than exposed in the high, you know, next to, you know, cars aren't that pretty anymore. You don't wanna just watch cars, you know? And just think about that sort of aspect of it. And I totally agree that like breaking up, there's opportunities to break up the parking and keep it shaded to keep the heat down in the city. And the, I really wanna encourage the entrance landscaping to be part of the architecture and it be integrated, cause right now there's this tower and there's kind of what looks like a afterthought of grading and planting. And it looks like it's just like a lot of, a missed opportunity, you might say.
I'll tell you, certainly missed opportunity if we can't get it to work. But ultimately, we are working all those into design. You've seen it, it's evolving, those were first renderings, these all come together. We listened to your comments, we put it into the lab and it comes back out, so.
I, I have total faith in your guys' ability to do this. And we're gonna keep an eye on it and we expect the best efforts out of you guys, cause it's really important.
Just two, two thoughts, REA, bikes, bike parking, bike rack somewhere, really, cause it's, it's kind of.
We have bike racks, but.
The backs of the.
For the record, back of the building, but we can work to more, incorporate more on the sides.
And just for the ARB, would be also kind of interesting is, from our standpoint, for those.
For the record, back of the building, but we can work to more corporate more on sides.
And just for the ARB, what would be also kind of interesting is, from our standpoint, for those members who aren't on it, even though it's a work in progress, to kind of get an idea of what you guys are thinking, so that we don't accidentally become redundant with respect to that. Even if it's a simple summary of thoughts, because that way, we're not playing...
Yeah, I think we'll try and do an ARB meeting before our next submission so that we can try and work that narrative or...
Yeah, I know it's a moving target.
We recorded it, and I can get a transfer from that, and I'll like do a summary.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because that way, we're kind of at the same pace.
And I think what I was saying was summarize, really, the general tone of what we were talking about, not everything. Because you don't want to recreate the entire conversation.
Yeah, but I tried to capture the bigger pieces, I think, in there, but I think, yeah, I'll get the summary.
Yeah, it would just be helpful for us.
For everyone to keep in the loop.
Yeah, we're all in the same place.
Yeah.
We appreciate and embrace this opportunity.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, it doesn't seem like we have any more questions. Are we adjourned or siphoned or...
I'm sorry?
We need to move to adjourn. Just close the meeting.
Just close it.
Keep this open, I mean, I'm afraid.
Motion to...